So can I please request that when councillors and members of the public are speaking, not to disclose any personal information of an individual, as this might infringe the rights of that individual and breach data protection rules. This is a formal town council meeting and members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak during public open sessions, but will not be permitted to speak at other times. So the first item on the agenda is apologies and we have apologies from councillor Lesley Page. Are there any declarations of interest in any item on the agenda, please? Councillor Knight?
Um, next, the application of the 11 N number of does. So long as you're in.
So it's 11?
Nine.
Oh, nine N. Thank you. If I can. Where an interest, it's. Nine P, because I'm a resident of Ivor Gardens. Are there any other declarations? Councillor Pulling, then.
Um, non-perjury, nine N as well.
Nine N for. Thank you, councillor.
My mind is the same, nine N. Non-perjury.
Okay.
Nine N, I bet, yeah.
Better declare that as well, nine N.
Anyone else?
Any more for nine N? Thank you. Right, um, town mayor's announcements. A sad set of announcements. It's been a sad month, June, with the deaths of two people who in very different ways have had an impact on our community in Biggleswade. On the sixth of June, we lost someone who had been a town councillor over many years and had also served on Biggleswade Urban District Council, Midbeds District Council and Bedfordshire County Council. After service in the Second World War, including delivering tanks to Gold Beach on D-Day, for which he received the Legion d'honneur. Vic Brunt spent his life working for the community of Biggleswade, including two periods as mayor, for which his name is inscribed on the chain. Vic was born and brought up in Biggleswade and in civil life, trained as an electrician. He married Doris and between them, they set up the Labour League of Youth and the Biggleswade branch of the Workers' Education Association. He was a good organiser and had great energy. A passion was the environment for which he was the county council spokesman and he helped found the Parish Paths partnership. He was also instrumental in setting up the twinning with Earl and Zay. In politics, he worked hard at both branch and constituency level and was an election agent for many years. Vic was a fixture in politics in Biggleswade for all of my adult life and although I didn't always agree with him, I very much respected his dedication to working for our town. And then the next day, on the seventh of June, Paul Fuller, the chief fire officer of Bedfordshire, passed away, a few weeks before he was due to retire from the service. He became chief in 2002 and served with great distinction, not only in Bedfordshire, but on the national stage. Paul gave outstanding leadership to the Bedfordshire Fire and Rescue Service over almost two decades, influencing so much positive change within the service. His deputy said of him, "There are undoubtedly people walking the streets of Bedfordshire today, thanks to Paul's dedication and devotion to the fire and rescue service." Paul had various other roles within the fire and rescue, including president of the Chief Fire Officers' Association, and he was asked by the government to support a failing county service elsewhere in the country. Amongst other charitable roles, he was chairman of the Children's Burns Trust and the Firefighters' Charity. His service was recognised with various awards, Queen's Fire Service Medal and becoming a commander of the British Empire, a freeman of the city of London and a deputy lieutenant of Bedfordshire. I have known Paul since he came to Bedfordshire, having worked with him strategically and met him at many civic events, not least the annual fire service awards and the fire service carol service. He was great company, always interesting and interested and with a great sense of humour. So our condolences go to the families of these two men, Vic Brunt and Paul Fuller, and I'd ask you to join me in a minute's silence in their memory and honour. Thank you, colleagues. We don't have an invited speaker this evening. Do we have any members' questions, please? Don't think so, I'm getting no indication. So we go on to the minutes and any recommendations of meetings. So first of all, the minutes of the council meeting from the first of June. So the first page is on page eight of the pack. So I'm going through for accuracy first. So anything on page eight? Page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Page 15? So may I sign them as a correct record, please, colleagues? Thank you very much. The next item B is to receive the minutes and the recommendation of the appeals committee. It's actually a resolution of the appeals committee and council is asked to ratify that resolution. Should I have a proposal for that, please?
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favour of ratifying, please show. Okay, I think that's 12. Any against, please? Abstentions? Okay. We have the minutes of the town centre management committee, but I don't think we have any recommendations from TCM. Thank you. Personnel committee, I don't think we have recommendations from personnel. One item that was discussed is on the agenda later on. We have the minutes of the Public Land and Open Spaces Committee, and again, I don't think there are any resolute recommendations from that committee. So if we could note that we've received all those minutes, please? Are we happy? Thank you. And then finally, the finance and general purposes committee, and there is one recommendation from FMGP. Would councillor Pulling like to say anything about it, please, and move the recommendation? Credit and debit cards. Which I think is a change to financial regulations, isn't it?
So there was a resolution to make a change to financial regulations at the next review, not this part. But as a part of the next review, we would approve those changes to financial regulations.
Okay, I thought it said recommended in the minutes.
So there's a result to recommend the adoption of the credit and debit card rules, which is, yeah.
So are you moving that?
Yes.
The credit and debit card, seconded, please. Thank you. Okay, all those in favour of the credit and debit card rules, please show. That's unanimous, thank you, colleagues. So I'm going back to the minutes of our meeting, first of June. And this is the matters arising. So is there anything on page eight? Page nine? Page 10? Councillor Knight?
Thank you. Item B, the matters arising from the previous minutes. We'll have to put up page on the pages, please.
Um, I don't actually have a significant update. Our public ground manager was in conversation in central Bedfordshire. Our public ground manager has also been involved in dealing with this type of issue before. He is doing away, I'm afraid, on leave for the last two weeks. So he's back today, for the first time. So I will highlight this to him and we will treat it as a progress, unconscious of the issue, to get in the town centre.
Thank you. Anything else on page 10, please? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Or page 15? Taking in that there are no matters arising, apart from the Higgin issue. And so we're on to planning applications and we've got a marathon. So the first one is, up close, single-storey extension. Councillor Page?
I don't have any objection as such, it's just the way they're bringing the garage forward feels a little bit odd and not entirely in keeping with some of the other houses on that street. So I propose no objection subject to neighbours, but just stressing the neighbours, given that it's just ever so slightly out of keeping. So I've moved no objection.
So I have a second of them, thank you. So no objection subject to neighbours, but stressing the fact that the neighbours do need to be consulted because it's a bit out of case. All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. Fifty High Street, Biggleswade. Variation or removal of conditions? Comments, colleagues, please? Councillor Albin?
Thank you. The, this application, it doesn't actually specify what condition number two is, which I think is a shame, it would be nice if it included the application, but the original application, that's a very generic one, that development basically should adhere to the plans. And this, this variation is to increase the height of the acoustic barriers. So I can see no reason why we should object, so move no objection.
Thank you. You'll have a second of no objection, thank you. All those in favour of no objection? Thank you, colleagues. Twenty Courtlands Drive, change garage door to a window.
None subject to neighbours.
Okay.
I want to second it.
Did you wish to speak?
Yes, I did, yes.
Sorry.
My concern is that it says change to garage door to a window. If I've understood the plans correctly, it is actually changing a garage to a room with the window there, so there's a loss of parking there and I am concerned about it from that point of view. But plus the fact that the agenda item looks innocuous until you realise that it's actually a total change in that way.
Thank you. Councillor Prowl?
I'd just like to comment on that actual planning application. It did say it was a conversion, so I took it as a type in it. That's going through.
So were you making a proposal, councillor Strong?
Um.
Or a comment?
I was making a comment.
Councillor Page?
Well, I'll make a proposal then. No, no comment, no objection subject to neighbours. I think that area of town has enough parking. I've had a look at, I did pick up on councillor Strong's point that it was obviously the conversion of a room, but houses round Courtlands Drive tend to have two or three parking spaces on their drive, which is adequate for those size of houses. So I'd move no objection, subject to neighbours.
Thank you. Seconded, thank you. All those in favour, no objection. Thank you. Four Thelmeal, near close, single-storey outbuilding to rear garden. Any comments, please?
Moving subject to neighbours.
Are we all happy with that? Yep. Single-storey rear extension and fenestration alterations at 128 Drove Road. Subject to neighbours. Yeah, subject to neighbours, are we all happy with that? Five London Road, conversion of outbuilding to habitable room.
Neighbours.
Point of order, is there a, what, everyone up to the front, unhapped? Presumably they didn't.
But no objection. Did you say no objection?
No objection.
Are we happy with no objection? Yeah, okay, thank you. Fourteen Derwin Avenue, conservatory to rear of property. Any comments?
Neighbours.
Subject to neighbours again, are we all happy? Yeah. Twenty-two Ripon Court. A resubmission, first floor and single-storey rear extension.
Subject to neighbours.
That reads funnily to me, but never mind. Subject to neighbours, are people happy? Fifty-two The Fork. Replace lean-to extension and outbuildings with a single-storey rear extension.
Neighbours.
Okay, subject to neighbours again, I'm getting nods. Fifty-five Planet Sway, erection of a summer house outbuilding in the rear garden.
Neighbours.
Okay, again, yeah, thank you. Hundred-and-forty-six Home Court Avenue, single-storey front and side extensions. Any comments, please? Subject to neighbours again? Yeah, okay. Eight Avon Rise, single-storey side and rear extension.
Subject to neighbours.
Okay. Unless somebody shouts, I'm moving on. Fourteen Compton Mead, two-storey rear and side extension.
Neighbours.
No objection subject to neighbours. Okay. Thirty-six High Street, Biggleswade. There's a lot there, I'm not going to read it all out. I know this is quite controversial, what your comments, please, councillors? Anything? Councillor Foster, thank you, sir.
I would very much like to see it go ahead and think exactly what our town needs and I hope we can go ahead, ask for the detail planned, not really by force, but I really hope we can go ahead. I see there is some concern about the removal of the clock mechanism, which I think perhaps councillor Bond may have some thoughts about, but as I understand it, the drum clock stays in the same position, it's just a mechanism which I wish to remove, providing it's moved to a safe place or stored somewhere, I don't think it's a problem. That's my view on that.
Well, I suppose it depends whether the clock still works in the way that we would want it to. Can I bring in councillor Pulling and then councillor Bond?
I'd just like to say, I think this proposal is something that is excellent for the town. Just to focus, comment on the fact this is a listed building consent, it's not a full planning application in any other respect. And from that perspective, with it being focused on internal works, I don't think it impacts on the character of the building and therefore I would propose no objection.
Thank you. Is that seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Bond, and then I think you wanted to speak? Okay.
I can just clarify actually what they mean by the clock mechanism. There's a framework which held the clock. The clock itself is now all self-contained externally. So basically, it's a redundant space and it will actually provide symmetry. What we must always realise is the clock is only its current location, because it used to be on the old post office, which is Barclay's. But the postmaster objected to people going into his bedroom to wind the clock, so it was moved, it was moved to the old town hall. So really, this has no effect on the clock itself, the clock will still function and it's been, it's been working, thanks to the, the cooperation of the owner, we had it operation in time for Remembrance Sunday, so it's been working ever since.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it puts certainly my mind at rest. So we have a proposal for no objection. Are we all happy with that? Yes? Yeah, okay, thank you. Thirty-nine Wander Avenue, single-storey side extension. Colleagues? Subject to neighbours, are we all happy? Yes. Thirty-nine Ivor Gardens, single-storey rear extension and new front porch. Any comments? Subject to neighbours? Okay. Twelve Rowan Crescent, single-storey rear extension. Be happy with that? Yeah, thank you. Hundred-and-fifty-two Drove Road, single and two-storey rear extension.
Subject to neighbours.
We all happy with that again? Thank you. Eight Eagle Farm Road, single-storey rear extension.
Subject to neighbours.
Okay, thank you. Right, now we come on to, oh, wait a minute, can I go on to the extra two and then we'll come back to the railway station? So it's sixty-three High Street, listed building, installation of a roof window forming smoke ventilation. Any comments? No, okay. Councillor Strong?
Yes, moving subject to neighbours and the observation to conservation officer.
Are we all happy with that, colleagues?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, when I first saw this, I blanched a bit, I thought it was going to say change of use of the library. It's only the ancillary garage. Any comments?
Move no objection.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I think this is on behalf of Central Beds, children's centre, the children's centre currently doesn't have its own location in Biggleswade, currently they're sharing the offices in Sandy and they were up on the, what was the Abbotsbury site and have not had a main base. So I think this is about creating a location for the children's centre and we absolutely, my view should be supporting this. The children's centres provide an amazing service for children in the town and I think actually it makes great use of the space as well and if we've got a redundant garage there, I see no reason why we should object.
Okay, so I think you're moving no objection.
Certainly am.
Is everybody happy with no objection? Thank you. Right, railway station. Colleagues will have seen some slides that were circulated earlier today. Can I ask that the slides are brought up on the screen and councillor Page and I could possibly councillor Bond's help, we'll try to talk through the main points. So. Okay. Can we go on to the next slide, please?
We hope to put it on slideshow view.
Is it possible to get rid of the black box that says the webinar is being recorded? Okay. I hope you.
Slide show, you know, we take a roll screen, wouldn't it?
And the main point of that particular slide is that there's a raised table on that diagram at the junction of Saffron Road and Station Road, which. Well, first of all, I should give a bit of background, there's been a meeting and quite a few conversations between Central Beds officers and the meeting was with councillor Page, councillor Bond and myself. And they have been developing the design, both in response to that meeting, but also in response to submissions from the Biggleswade Rail Users Group and other consultees. So if you read the papers for the Development Management Committee tomorrow, because it's going to committee tomorrow, you will see that they have made various changes. And one of them they're making that we asked for was to remove the raised table, because we were concerned about plasma lorries being able to come out of the station yard and turn into Saffron Road, which is actually a better way to get out to the A1, Saffron Road and St Andrews Street, rather than down and through the town centre. And when they're double waggon, it would have been quite difficult. But the other key issue here is, well, first of all, that the way of the zebra crossing is, so when we get to the proposal, you'll see that the proposal for us tonight is that we ask them to move the zebra crossing. It's not where the desire line is. Nobody's disputing the fact that there needs to be a crossing, but it's not where the desire line is. And I'll come on to that again in a minute. And you'll see at the top right-hand corner, it says additional bus shelters. One of the comments we made was that one bus shelter was not enough, so there are now five on the plan, which is better. The next slide, please, is just showing the current bus stops at Sentry House, which I think we know about. The next slide, please. We were talking about when the transport interchange is in place, how can we, or how can we have buses stopping on the market square? Because we will still need a bus stop on the market square. And we were talking about the bus stop being on the side opposite the funeral directors. And then you have an issue, because on non-market days, it's fine, as you can see on the left-hand square, because the buses will go out across Market Street. On market days, then obviously Market Street is closed. So what they want to do is to try this out, see how things might work, by putting a barrier in place, so that the barrier is where the circle is on the left-hand side, across the bus exit lane, so that will be closed off on non-market days. And then, what you can't quite see on there, but on market days, the bus exit lane would be opened, so that the buses can still go out that way. Some of them may go down Higgin Street, but that's not terribly easy either for buses, depending on their size, so. And also, Central Beds have to talk to the bus operators to sort out how they can make that work. So can we have the next slide, please? Now, this is the possible design of the bus shelters. Clear polycarbonate with a green seven roof. I, I mean, my opinion of this, and I think others, is that this is too open and if they're facing the wrong way and there's a bit of a wind, the rain will just blow into the shelter the way it is there. So what I'd like to do is to have further discussions with Central Beds about the actual design. So what I'd like to do is to have further discussions with Central Beds about the actual design of the shelter. So we'll come on to how that might happen in a moment. Next slide please. Now, the other thing we talked about is that the way the transport interchange is designed here, there will be a loss of parking spaces. So we talked about, first of all, we talked about where a layover might be, because you'll remember that in the design that's gone to DMC, there are no layovers in the interchange themselves. So we talked first of all about Station Road, which is ideal in that it would help with the rail replacement. And they were talking about the fact that the layover space could also be a pick-up and drop-off point, rather than cars having to go right into the station forecourt. But as you'll see from that slide, the pick-up and drop-off will lose us four to five parking spaces. And then it says under the note that with the zebra crossing, it will also take up eight or nine other spaces. So there's a bit of worry there about how many parking spaces we might use, lose. And also, there's the query about the actual position of the zebra crossing. Now, we looked at St Andrews Street and colleagues will be aware of that piece of tarmac, raised tarmac between the old St Andrews Street and the newer road, where people park along the edge of it in front of the houses. And I think there are five spaces there at the moment. And what was talked about quite a lot of years ago, when Maurice Jones was one of our ward councillors, was to change that parking. I mean, they call it echelon parking here. I've always called it, and I've just lost the word. Chicane, thank you very much. Chicane parking. Anyway.
Chevron.
Chevron parking, thank you. We got there. So you could probably increase the number of spaces to nine or 10 if you're parking into the space rather than alongside it. So what's being talked about is if there's money left over from the HIF money allocated for the transport interchange, it's possible that it could be spent on that, or we may be able to find section 106 money. It's obviously not in the same place as Station Road, but it's still a bit of extra parking within easy walk of the town centre. We know that there's already what should be a bus lay-by in Church Street. When Asda was built and it was designed, that was definitely meant to be a bus layover place, and it's never been used as that. So it's possible that that could be used if we need it to be. Because the issue is not just accommodating the buses that we have now. But if Home Farm is developed, there's going to be shuttle bus service between the employment site and the town centre. So there'll be extra buses there. And of course, we're looking at an alternative transport corridor if there's going to be more development to the east, and we don't know where that's going yet. That's in early stages. But I know that the more forward-thinking people are thinking that there'll be some sort of autonomous vehicles running about the town in 20 years' time. How we get there, I don't know. Hill Lane, there is that bus lay-by by the stop. And apparently it is sometimes used for layover. I don't think I've ever seen that, but apparently it is used sometimes. So there's one layover space there. And then we talked about the possibility of London Road, but we decided that the bottom of London Road really wasn't the place. You've got the zebra crossing anyway, and it's a bit far from the town centre. So could we have the next slide please? This is to show that they have taken on board some of what was discussed at the meeting we had. Because there was concern about the, well, the swept path, as it's technically called, that the turning circle of the plasma lorries and also buses coming out of the interchange and whether they could actually get into Saffron Road. And they're now saying that they can. Palace Street, which is left turn at the moment, would be right turn in the new scheme. And you can't turn into Palace Street from Station Road anyway now. There are no entry signs, so that would stay the same. Now, when these were put together, we didn't have the drawing showing the raised table. I understand that it's arrived late this afternoon, but I haven't seen that drawing yet. So then if we go on to the last slide please. This is the proposed resolution. So I think we're pleased that Central Beds here have been talking to the town council about this, and they've already taken on board some of our concerns, like the the lack of bus shelters. So the first point is that we are very much in favour of this concept of the transport interchange. And it's interesting because they actually point out in the papers to DMC, quite rightly, that the transport interchange is in the town centre masterplan that became supplementary planning guidance in 2011. So we've been talking about this for a long while. And the big thing is that we know about the constraints of the land and that network rail will not give us any more land. And that's part of the reason why we haven't got the layover spaces, because I think we all saw the presentation that an engineer from ACOM gave us a few months ago, which would have been a super design with layovers. But GTR and network rail weren't going to play ball with that one. So we support the planning application, subject to the crossing moving, we're saying to the end of Saffron Road, but I think there are going to be compromises. But I think the main thing here is to actually make sure that Central Beds continue to talk to us. But we're saying that if the crossing is moved south, then the town council has no objection. If not, then the council can't support the application in its current form. We're appreciating five bus shelters instead of the original one. But want to talk to Central Beds about the final design of the shelters and whether they're actually appropriate, as open as they are. Pleased to note the right turn into Saffron Road. We've been in favour of that as a council for some time. We're asking that, and I think this will happen anyway, that the crossing and highways changes are considered by Traffic Management Committee, which is effectively councillor Dalgano as the cabinet member. But we do have our deputy cabinet member for highways who can speak on behalf of the town council at that meeting. And finally, saying that we appreciate that it's been a long progress to thank the office for accommodating some of our suggestions. And throwing into the mix, might it be possible for the application to be deferred to allow further discussions and amendments? Now, I'm not really expecting that DMC will do that, but it's making the point that we need to be involved. And I think councillor Bond, you were suggesting that you might put forward at the committee a planning condition to try and support that.
Well, I, no, what I'm just saying, I'll have to see what happens tomorrow and how it's presented by the case officer. And then I'll make any, I'll actually look at it openly on a day.
Thank you councillor Bond. So open to discussion now. Are there points we've missed? Do people agree with the general thrust of things? Councillor Knight and then councillor Woodhead.
Thank you. So I support 99% of the proposed resolution and agree with the points you've made. I think we need to go further in relation to the bus shelters. So I think we need to be on the record in answering the thoughts with the issues I see. So to my mind firstly, we anticipate in the medium to long term, this will replace Sentry House. And if you look at the shelters and the accommodation provided at Sentry House, that is very different to what you proposed here. The local plan, those plans, the transport interchange shall provide high-quality shelter, that I feel what the offer calls short of that. So specifically, as you mentioned, the shelters are not fully enclosed, and I think most of them should be, although maybe one not, that makes it more accessible for people in wheelchairs. There is no seating. I think that's completely unacceptable. And I've seen evidence of lighting either. And I would like to understand what the lighting is going to be like within the shelters. So I think there may be a lot of seating and lighting there.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if people know more, that this comes down to the detailed design. So I think what we need to be saying to Central Beds and the officers is that we wish to be fully consulted as the designs are developed. I've got councillor Woodhead, councillor Albin and then councillor Pullinger.
Thank you. I agree with the proposal forward, and I also agree with a lot of what councillor Knight just said about particularly about cross shelters. So I would reiterate that point, but it is sort of linked also with what you've said, Adam, there as well in terms of the design. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to essentially showcase the town to visitors as well. And I think there's an opportunity there that has been missed so far that we could have, I'm not quite sure, either a mural or something that we have around the town already with the mosaics, that could be included within that. I don't specifically know what, but I think we ought to have that conversation. You know, looking at the local history, some sort of vinyl work, maybe something like that. For those that, yes, it's going to be used by commuters and regular passengers, but there will be people who come to the station to visit, visit people who love things, the chopper work or whatever it might be. So I think there's an opportunity that we can put a bit of the town so, different account history within there and showcase that. I think that'd be really well done.
Well, I didn't know until I read it today, but the report to DMC actually says to provide a sense of arrival, concrete planters are to be installed at pedestrian entrance points to the north and south. The planters are to serve as public art and will be engraved with artwork to reflect Bigglesway's historic character, although the final design is to be agreed. It is considered that the final design of the public art should be the subject of a condition to ensure that the historic references to the town are not lost. So I think we may be all right with that one.
I think the public art is fine. I don't think concrete planters are sound particularly welcoming, but I'm, I think you get my drift. And I think we need to be a bit ambitious and be proud of the town, to give away some talent. We really need to just, I think, push that point. But whether concrete planters are it, probably not, but I think if there's an opening there to to have that array, I think that's quite welcome. We need to make sure that's like.
Thank you. Councillor Albin and then councillor Pullinger.
I'm doubt the progress that you made, but it's pleasing to see. I still have concerns about pedestrian crossing over the station forecourt. Obviously, there's going to be more pedestrian traffic going to and from the interchange. And there's no proper means of crossing over the forecourt itself. There is ones over crossing there that can, in a place that is unlikely to be used by pedestrian traffic moving from like the town to the interchange and back again. So with vehicles manoeuvring in the, in the station forecourt itself, there's definite scope for issues there. So I would very much like to see a crossing in place there. So I hope that can be pursued as well.
Okay, thank you. You've highlighted the point that the crossing, as on these drawings, is not on the desire line for pedestrians crossing. And I'm afraid I wasn't very happy about reading that they want to encourage people to walk to the station rather than coming cars. And they talk about strategically placed street paraphernalia to encourage pedestrians to use the crossing points. And that's in direct conflict to the reason that the crossing is there for visually impaired people. So putting stuff, you know, we've just decluttered. We don't want a lot of clutter. So we don't want street paraphernalia to try and funnel people into the zebra crossing, in my view. So I think there is, there's quite a bit of design stuff there to look at. So that's another point. Thank you councillor Albin. Councillor Pullinger.
Thank you. So I think I agree with most of the points in the proposal. I just want to add to what councillor Knight said in relation to the shelters. So I think now is the young, real opportunity. I think we have to really make our point that the currently proposed shelters are not adequate for the needs of residents. The fact that there's no seating, the fact that it opens the iron ones. And the, the design of shelter is included in the paperwork and in documentation of an application. So applications approved, that is, and that's what we're going to get. So I think we really need to strengthen the wording around our displeasure with the current proposals around the design of shelters in the proposal. And if councillor Knight is making proposals like that, I'd say.
Thank you very much. councillor Fage.
Oh, sorry. I was actually going to make a proposal that actually we accept the wording that was presented to us on the final slide, but with slightly tighter wording over the shelters. So perhaps we could say that we are grateful to Central Beds for introducing four more shelters to make five, which I think is the right thing for the interchange. But, and again, recognising that we want to be consulted on the exact final design, but our position at the moment is that we'd like to see perhaps some seating included and slightly more enclosed. I think that keeps it open enough to, when we are consulted, to go into a little bit more detail, but also to be clear that we're not terribly content with what is proposed at the moment. So that gives us a little bit of wiggle room, but also keeps the door open to furthering that conversation when it comes along, whilst also making our position on what is presented to us pretty clear. So I'd actually like to move what was proposed on the final slide, subject to slightly tighter wording over those shelters.
Okay. And we have the point about further pedestrian crossing over the forecourt. Although we have got a crossing when you get round Bay Street House, but councillor Albin's worried about that. So I think we could put something in about that. That's all right with you?
I wasn't going to put that in. What worries me is we have the, there is the opportunity to walk round the east side of the interchange towards. So if you wanted to cross the forecourt, you could go round that right angle towards where the current coffee shop is and the taxi brand. So we know Gogetants are not prepared to lose any further parking spaces. And what worries me is that I don't think that will, I don't think that will wash with the people who are proposing this. So I wouldn't include that as part of the proposal, although I know in the ideal world, we might like to see something like that. I don't think, given the stakeholders that we're having to engage, that's maybe a possibility. So I wouldn't include that as part of the proposal.
Okay, that's fine. I think colleagues know that I'm going to attend Development Management tomorrow. I've only got three minutes to talk, but I can talk, I can mention some of this other stuff around the formal proposal. And we have to get Mr Clark this wording to Central Beds this evening or early tomorrow morning, because we've missed the late sheet anyway with the timing of our council meeting. Councillor Strong and then back to councillor Albin.
Thank you, Adam. Mine is more peripheral point and goes to the marketplace bus routes. My concern there is if buses are going to go down Hitching Street, the one-way part, out towards the junction further down with Saffron Road, that the buses will not be able to go round there. The very least they're going to do is going to be driving over the pavement as it stands. The wheelbase is far too long and too wide to get round there. I think we've all seen cars struggling to get round there to stick strictly to the road. So I think that's an observation to be made. There may be something that needs to be looked at if that is their proposal. I don't think it's physically practical at the moment without driving over the pavement.
Okay, I've made a note of that. It's not part of the planning application, but it is something we need to look at.
So it's on the present side presentation.
Yeah. I think the officers who prepared the slides were trying to reflect the kinds of discussions we've had. Sorry, back to councillor Albin.
Yeah, back to my point about the crossing over the station forecourt. I am, I am very concerned about potential for accidents there. That is, people are going to take the shortest, safest route. So pedestrians aren't going to walk all the way around the station forecourt to get to the interchange, especially if they're late for whatever they need to catch. So I would like to see one final push to try and get some safe crossing in place over the forecourt. So if necessary, I'd like to move an amendment so that that gets added to the resolution.
Okay, I haven't heard a second of the councillor Fage's resolution yet. Sorry, can I have a, I've got a second now. Will you accept that amendment?
I think it's something we can actually include in our formal response, unfortunately, on the grounds that we have been told time and time again that network rail, that the Gogetants have an agreement with network rail about the number of parking spaces that. that Gogeten's have an agreement with Network Rail about the number of parking spaces that they have on the forecourt. And Gogeten's have been very, very clear that they're not prepared to lose any parking space, be it even one, because it's quite a significant stream of revenue for them. For me, don't get me wrong, in the ideal state, I'd love to see safer crossings there. But faced with the reality that we have, I think, I think that will either fall on deaf ears or distract from perhaps things which are potentially more achievable. I don't see that as achievable in my view. So I don't think that's something that I'd be prepared to accept. I'm sorry.
Okay, so do I have a second for the amendment? No. Okay, I have councillor Pollinger and then councillor Storn to speak.
It's probably a better move, one if we've got a second amendment, just to make, I just wanted to make a point that the the forecourt is outside of the red line of this application, therefore I don't think we can make a request for something like.
It's something to talk to the engineers about separately, I think, and we will do that. Councillor.
Councillor Pollinger just made the point I was going to make.
Thank you. Councillor Thomas, sorry.
Recently, we've got the crossing in Stratton, Stratton House. And that has been, to my mind, what I've seen is brilliant because it's 20 mile an hour. And I think we can do the same there.
I think that's important to remember that it is a 20 mile an hour limit all the way along that top part of the station road now in the plans. Anything else? Okay, well councillor Page's proposal is that we accept the one on the slide with the amendments about the bus shelter, about seating and being more enclosed. I think that's it, isn't it?
More or less, yeah. Potentially lighting as well.
Lighting, yeah, okay. All those in favour, please? Against abstentions?
I'm standing as well.
Thank you. Very much for that. So if we can get that formal proposal to Central Beds from yourself, and then I'll speak to that, the DMC tomorrow to put the points across. So I'm now moving on to item 10, which is the accounts. So councillor Pollinger, do you want to present the accounts, please?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to propose the adoption of the financial administration report, so the detailed balance sheet to the end of April 2021, summing from expenditure by committee to the 30th of April 2021, the detailed income and expenditure by committee to the end of April 2021, and the Lloyd's Bank payment listings for April 2021.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Yes, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you very much. So then the internal audit report.
So I propose that we adopt the, or accept the internal audit report for example, one, and the one of the two and three.
Second for that? Thank you. All those in favour? Sorry, yes.
I've got some concerns over the internal, this audit report in that we've had these audit reports on very much the same pattern for a number of years, indicating there's been no issues. As I understand it, some issues have been raised, which would not be entirely satisfactory. I think town clerk is going to pull me up on this as a pro, but I am concerned that we've had these reports and been comfortable because we haven't got any issues to look at. And yes, in the last few months, there appeared that there should have been some issues that would have appeared in these reports, or at least in my view, they should have appeared. And we were possibly led to a false sense of security in terms of how well everything was being managed. This causes me concern that we're getting the same kind of report. And I think things have now improved considerably over the last few months. But I'm just concerned about how reliable these audits are.
If I can bring in the town clerk, please, and then councillor Pollinger.
Can I just reverse one?
Okay, yes, of course. Councillor Pollinger.
In the papers this evening, we also had the minutes of the FGP meeting, which included the recommendations from the finance review, which, and those recommendations which have been adopted by FGP. I'll just refer to one of those, which is recommendation 39, which is that we should change our internal auditor for the 2022, 2023 financial year, which I think in large part addresses your concerns, councillor Storn. In addition, there are obviously lots of findings in that finance review, which although they weren't picked up by our auditors, the auditors do have a very narrow scope in terms of what they are looking at. When we do look to change our auditors for 2022, 2023, we can look at the specification of what we're actually asking those auditors to do, which may provide a more in-depth review of our system.
First thing I should say is it's customer practice, officers, not to stand, I'm not being disrespectful. I'd agree with everything that councillor Pollinger has just said. The breadth of the internal audit is very restrictive. It is a very, very light touch. As the person who co-wrote the report and was involved in it in great detail, I think the finance review that we've just completed is a very good piece of work and we should be proud of it. We've unearthed a number of opportunities to improve our practice significantly. This is, this is one of them. And we should be much more conscious that whoever we would potentially partner with in the future should be potentially more challenging to the organisation. I'd be very happy to contribute towards that exercise.
Okay, councillor North.
Well, yes, just to make, make a point. I mean councillor Pollinger referred to changing the auditor, which is fine and is proper, good practice anyway to change your auditor at that time. But isn't the key really is the remit they're given? That if they're given the same briefing as these people, then you're going to get the same type of audit and type of report, don't we? Shouldn't we be looking to strengthen the brief they give so that we get a more in-depth which will answer the sort of issues raised by councillor Storn?
Councillor Pollinger.
I think that was exactly the final point I made when I responded earlier, that when we come to do the process of appointing an auditor, a new auditor for 2022, 2023, we absolutely should look at the specification of what we're asking them to do. I completely agree with your comments and we should that be done.
I partly agree. But I still think we're going to be in a situation where, where we shouldn't be unusual in our practices to any other council, but we should be challenging to ourselves internally in our governance. I think that having a stronger financial structure in place with more experienced officers should help, yes. And I think more transparency for members and a bigger involvement for members should help as well. So there shouldn't be any surprises at any time of year.
Okay, so we have a proposal to accept the internal audit and approve any recommendations, of which I don't think there are any specific recommendations. So all those in favour of receiving the report, please? Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, a council of the year ended 31st of March. Are you speaking to this councillor?
So again, the councillor has presented, so I would like to propose that we adopt and approve the annual government statement for the auditor of the year 2021, and to approve and adopt the accounts and statement accounts containing the auditor for 2021.
Any comments, questions that people have? So we're going to vote on this, adopting an appropriate governance statement and the accounts. And then there's a formal copy here that I need to sign as part of the meeting. But all those in favour of approving the governance and the annual accounts, please show. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. So if you'll just give us a minute while we. Okay, now, thank you very much, colleagues. So I'm on to items for consideration, the crime statistics. Sorry.
I'm going to accept the crime statistics for February's main this year. The report is now presented accordingly. And as always, thank you to the local authorities for supporting the justice and respect for your rights.
Thank you. Councillor Storn, did you want to say anything, please?
Yes, I'm very, very pleased with what we're getting from the statistical information. But in a practical point of view, to trend and everything else, I think it'd be very helpful as we develop that the previous call can be added to it. So we then get on a year-on-year comparison, four months. It's quite interesting, but it fluctuates and we may find that certain months and certain periods of the year will have different kinds of criminal offences occurring. So I think that in the longer term, now that we've got a good system working, that if it could just be projected over a longer period of time, so it's get taken the full year and then year-on-year over a period of time, I think that would be of great help. But it's very nice to see what's going on. But I don't think you can actually spot anything that's particularly significant one way or another on these short viewpoints. So it's a long term, as you've got started now, please keep it up. It's going very well.
Are there any other comments or questions about the statistics? No? So are we happy to accept the statistics as presented?
Yes, moving.
Thank you very much. So item B is the letter from the Royal British Legion, asking us if we're going to support them in the way that we usually do for a member on Sunday. Would anybody like to speak? Councillor Pollinger.
I suppose we support them in the same way that we have done for many years. You know, we have a really strong partnership with the Royal British Legion. This is one of the best events we do in the town. And, you know, I'd like to propose that we carry on as we have done for previous years. By that, I don't mean going back to what we did in 2020, although in a very short space of time, they did brilliantly to provide the event that they did. But, you know, looking at what we did in the years prior to that, building on it and making sure that we continue the work that we've been doing. So I'd like to propose that we, that we, that we welcome what they've, welcome the content of their letter and continue with that partnership in the way we have done before.
Do I have a second for that? Yeah. And councillor Woodhead, you wanted to speak?
I think councillor Page said pretty much everything I was going to say, so I'm happy.
Thank you. So all those in favour of telling British Legion that we're still in partnership with them effectively? Okay, thank you very much. That's unanimous. I think, pardon?
Normal. I don't know what normal feels like. So long ago.
New normal.
New normal, sorry. Right, market fees and charges. We have the report from the place shaping manager. Do you wish to say anything in support of the report?
I have nothing further to add. The first table is what we showed, the fees that we're currently very well afford here at 50%. The proposed fees were changing in mind of the market policy, in mind of the market strategy that we're familiar to the end of.
Thank you very much. Councillor Knight, did you wish to say?
Thank you. Yes, so thank you, place manager. So I think, yes, it's here, the operational decisions to produce the pitch fees to eight pounds. I think it is outside, you know, healthy markets, running an average of 18 minutes per week to return the charges to something approaching normalcy. It's proposed for the week ahead from the 1st of August, which is really the first opportunity after the expected relaxation of social distancing, hopefully on the 19th of July. I've worked with Simon and councillor Page, hopefully clean up the presentation of the fees and make a little bit of sense. But we're sure there'll be a few comments. So it's a somewhat cleaner structure. It also includes a gazebo rental, which is something that we mentioned before, or new traders, twenty pounds to rent the gazebo whilst they're becoming a standardization and that seems to be working quite well. So I would propose the charges have included. And after this, we advertise that if council agrees, the new rates as quickly as possible on the website can contact pages and they will present.
Thank you. If you wish to speak.
No, I'll second that.
Councillor Pollinger.
Thank you. I just have two comments to make. One, probably some more clarification, one which is that we're sliding them in, both of them. Firstly, I note that the change in terms of when the payments are due, from payments due on arrival to payments required on the day of trade. And there's one big whether instead of on the day of trade, it should be on or before, bearing in mind our strategy to potentially go into online payments now. The main concern I had really was around the charity stores and these Bigglesway voluntary organisations, singing fine and then the non-Bigglesway voluntary organisations. There were a number of voluntary organisations and charity that deliver benefit to the residents of Bigglesway, but not based in Bigglesway. So I would like to propose a slight amendment to the wording of Bigglesway voluntary organisations to voluntary organisations which benefit the residents of Bigglesway. So that if it was one of the hospices, say, that they hospice, for example, where residents of Bigglesway would get a benefit from that, they could come and have a stall on our market without having to pay. I would ask that that be slightly.
So did you say you seconded it? Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Storn.
Yes, just a question. I know that there's rented larger pitches over more than two stalls in size. I had a feeling that the town centre management, we'd be discussing limiting the size of pitches to just two stall size. Have I missed something? And if you're going for a larger stall, how large is large at the extra amount? Because certainly, I think I saw one stall that had spread considerably more than two pitches on Saturday. So I'm just a bit concerned on that particular point. Perhaps a chairman of town centre management or the working group could clarify that for me.
Councillor Page?
I think these are things to be, there will be a little bit more detail in the policy which is coming forward. There will be a little bit more detail in the policy which is coming forward. So we're due for a policy refresh pretty much now. That will be considered by the working group in the first week or first two weeks of July. And that will become, that will be coming to either council or TCM very soon after. So I think that's probably the kind of detail we'd expect from the policy, rather than something we'd expect from these fees. At the moment, it's at the discretion of the town centre, sorry, it's at the discretion of the market superintendent. I mean, if there are concerns over specific stalls, we can take those up with him individually. But those boundaries, yes, we explained them a little bit in the fees. I expect us to give a little bit more detail further still in the policy itself, and that's to be considered then.
Councillor Strong?
I'll come back on that point. I appreciate that the policy is being updated. I'm just concerned that if we accept the resolution to set out tonight, that if there are policy changes that are needed, we may have tied our hands for a period of, say, six months before we can actually do anything about it. So if there's some flexibility in the wording there in terms of what we charge for larger pitches, if we're looking at reviewing and updating the policy, I think that would be preferable rather than leaving, setting it in a particular figure than then having to logic the whole thing later because of that particular point. So perhaps we could have a further amendment to the effect that the fee for the regular pitch larger than two pitches will be at the discretion of the market superintendent of the council.
Are you happy to accept that? I think it was your proposal. Will you propose the amendment?
But the main proposal was proposed by.
Well, will you accept an addition to your amendment? And then we will take the amendment and then we'll take the proposal.
Well, I'm accepting to the proposal.
I haven't taken any votes yet.
I think I would like to understand the chair of TCM's view before I accept it.
Councillor Knight?
We're going in circles, thank you. I don't have a strong objection, so the proposal is to revise the wording to say larger pitches at the discretion of the market superintendent. I would object to that.
Thank you.
Coming back to you councillor Pauling, I've got a note that you wanted voluntary organisations that benefit Bigglesway. But I think you said something beforehand about some wording that you weren't happy with, and I haven't found that word.
So it was the, in the header of the table, to change from payment required on the day of trade to payment required on or before the day of trade.
Thank you, I see now. Okay. So we have that amendment to vote on first. So it's three amendments, payment required on or before the day of trade, larger than double pitch at the discretion of the market superintendent, and voluntary organisations that benefit Bigglesway. Those in favour of those amendments, please show. That's unanimous, I think. And then are we happy to accept the charges as proposed with those amendments? Those, please show if you are. Yeah, thank you, that's unanimous again. Thank you. The next item is the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. The agenda says to decide how to celebrate. I think this is too much to decide at one council meeting. And in fact, it was discussed at the Events Working Group. Councillor Pauling, do you want to come in?
Okay, so I would like to essentially make a proposal that we defer the consideration overall of this to the Events Working Group, actually. But there was one thing in particular that I'm really keen to be looking to and aim to do, and that is in relation to the beacon lighting. And I'd like to propose that we ask officers to identify a suitable location in the town to actually erect on the permanent beacon braziers in commemoration of the Jubilee. And that we hold that event on the second of June for lighting on that. But other than that, I think I would like to also propose that we make the event considered by the Events Working Group.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you, yes. councillor Woodhead, do you want to come in?
Yeah, we need to follow along from that. I'm not sure how we need to state that on separately, but other than quite a few in the Events Working Group. But on that vein, I think that we should very much look at having some sort of event in the town centre, either on the fifth or the fourth of June, obviously detailed, decided. Obviously to coincide with the brazier the day before. But I think we do need to talk, give a bit of a signal intent, we want to do something, obviously detailed and decided. And whether that can be combined with a market or something, but I don't know. I skip February, it's probably we should certainly acknowledge this in the town. Clearly it's a one-off event, it's unlikely to ever happen again. And I think it needs to be acknowledged in the, especially if you have a past year where there have been a number of events that I know as a town, like, have not been able to do that. So clearly there's a bit of a, I think, a pent-up interest from the public in this sort of thing. And I think, yeah, we should look at the detail later, but definitely have something on that.
Thank you. councillor Strong, then councillor Foster?
I'm slightly disappointed at the proposal, and it is more positive. I think it should be going to the working event group to consider. But I think we should be positively supporting the town council entering into doing something to celebrate this event, which is unique in this country and may remain unique in this country forever. So I think that the council just saying we're referring to the Events Working Group is a bit weak. I think we should be fully, we should be fully supporting entering into this. And would refer it to the working group to come up with ideas, whether it's be mixed with the car or whether we have whole roasts and things like that. But I think we should be a bit more positive than just saying, oh, we're referring to the working group. And the proposal disappoints me immensely, it is so weak.
Here, here.
I think there were some assumptions there, councillor.
I am more than happy for as much positive wording as councillor Strong likes to include in the proposal. I'm absolutely, completely in favour of it, which should absolutely make this a huge celebration in the town. And I completely echo his sentiments. I just wanted to specifically focus on the one area that I think we need to start thinking about now, of making sure it happens. And then get our events working group to really have a whole host of really positive events and to celebrate this fantastic occasion in June, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. councillor Foster?
I hate to be overly positive, and I think we haven't done that. In turn, I absolutely support that. What I would say is that the working group does a good job. And I think this is an event that we should encourage as many councillors as possible to participate in, in terms of the involvement. So don't limit it to the former members of the working group. I think we should make sure that when these meetings take place, that all members of the council are invited and have the opportunity to be involved, because it's absolutely a key event for us. And I think everyone should have the opportunity to participate. But yes, thank you.
Okay. So we'll limit a lot of positivity. And then we're looking at events in the town centre on one or more of the days of that holiday. We're asking the officers to look for a location for a permanent beacon, because that would need to be looked at fairly soon. And we're going to invite all councillors to the Events Working Group meetings that look at this in more detail. And obviously, any proposals will come to council. Is that okay with you? All those in favour, then, please? Very positive. Thank you. Remote meetings. Members are invited to consider responding to this letter. Councillor Pauling?
Thank you. I'm actually the member who proposed that we defer this item. And in fact, I think that initially brought the attention to the bar. Unfortunately, this was in my encouraging us to contribute to a consultation around virtual meetings and things going forward, which was primarily focused on principal councils, but also was open for us to respond to that consultation as well. Unfortunately, the deadline for submissions to that consultation was the seventeenth of June. So we've missed the boat, essentially. So I propose essentially that we take no action on this.
Okay, do I have a second for that proposal?
Yep.
Want to come in?
Thank you. So I have a similar voice to councillor Pauling. I'm a little disappointed with the group made mistake here, because, yes, the consultations were over weeks for the ground on the seventh of June. So the website has the name of the person who's organising this consultation. I wonder whether we can contact them and understand whether they would accept a late submission for us. In which case I would propose a good late submission. The rules on holding remote meetings should be relaxed, and it should be something that individual parish councils are free to choose how and when their meetings are held, and wasn't be to be set down in legislation in order to go against.
Okay, well, I've got a motion on the table. I think we need to take a vote on that first, because that's been seconded. So the motion is from councillor Pauling to take no further action on this.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, if councillor Knight has proposed an amendment, I'm happy to accept the amendment.
You can't have an amendment that's an exact opposite of a motion. I'm sorry, but that's not allowed. So I'm going to take the vote on the proposal that we take no further action. All those in favour? Two, three, four, five, six of us. All those against? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so your proposal has fallen. So now councillor Knight, your proposal.
So can you mind resolutely contact the person who is organising this corporate address and make them give evidence on the public website? And if they would accept evidence from us late, that we should write proposing that the laws around rural meetings are somewhat evil. No longer a matter of legislation, as it should be here on the council to determine what matter on what place.
Second of that?
I'm not seconding it, sir.
Okay, councillor North.
Well, I don't think this is a very good idea at all, because it's all very well, we all know. Obviously, Bigglesway Town Council operates to the highest possible standards. And we would only ever do something that is totally responsible and in the interests of our residents in the town. But if this were to be made a rule across the whole country, which is what we're talking about, all sorts of shenanigans could be going on in all sorts of disreputable councils who might hold meetings without notifying the public in locations that nobody else could get to, or providing false information about where it was going to be. Have dodgy connections with Zoom that nobody could access. I mean, all sorts of strange things could happen at the moment. The rules are laid down in legislation, but it must be in a fixed place, fixed time, advertised to the public, open to the public, et cetera. And it seems to me that that is the right way to do it, and that the proposal before us is, I find, completely unacceptable.
Councillor Strong, you are in behalf of.
I very much echo councillor North's comments. I think it is a very dangerous step to take de-legislating. I fully accept that in view of the last year, that there needs to be some flexibility to build in the system. But that must be through primary legislation and statutory instrument, not through being given the freedom for individual councils, individual councillors to take over and create anarchy. That's where it resulted overall. So I'm going to be fully supporting councillor North's sentiments and voting against his proposal. It's far too wide-ranging and very, very dangerous.
Thank you. councillor Pauling, back to councillor.
So I hope I'm clarifying the sentiment of councillor Knight's proposal and certainly my interpretation of it, is that the proposal in terms of de-legislation is in respect of the physical location of the meeting, not in terms of notice periods, advertising to the public, providing the public to attend, et cetera, et cetera. All of that would still remain codified in legislation. We're proposing a relaxation in terms of where the meeting is held and the ability to hold meetings online, should a specific parish council, town council make that the case through its own standing orders and operating practices.
Point the water. With respect to councillor Pauling, that isn't what the proposal says.
It wasn't clarified in that way in the proposal, you're quite right. councillor Knight?
Maybe I also agree. So it is my intention only to relax the laws so that a council, perhaps one with the power of general competence, which would probably allow some of the smaller councils has the freedom to choose whether a meeting is in the council chamber, hybrid meeting or online, as the situation details, of course, in those periods, be required for the public to attend, should that.
Okay, councillor Albon?
I think if we're going to respond, then our response should be something along the lines that legislation should be more flexible to allow things like remote meetings when they're required. Because we don't know what might happen in the future and that they will be required or not. We were in a curious position where we weren't allowed to hold remote meetings, but we potentially weren't allowed to meet physically either for a period of time. Now, that was a preposterous situation to be in. And legislation should be flexible enough to allow for that kind of problem. So I don't agree with what councillor Knight's proposal. But I think we should respond to say the legislation should be as flexible as possible to allow for these kind of situations.
Thank you. Councillor Knight, do you want to reiterate what your proposal is, so I can take a vote on it?
I would be happy to accept councillor Albon's comment, this is the nature of the government and such, essentially by the city.
Okay.
Do I have a second for the amendment? Thank you. Okay. Sorry, councillor Strong.
I think I can totally support councillor Albon's amendment in terms that it's down to primary legislation and the flexibility according to circumstances. But I think it's very important, if we make that resolution, that we get the wording right, so there's no ambiguity. Because the points councillor North's made were entirely relevant on the original proposal. Councillor Albon has addressed those with his amendment. And I think that that is the way to go forward, but I'm just concerned that we get the right wording, so that it's quite clear and ambiguous that we're accepting the need for the primary legislation, but that may need amendment to allow flexibility to cater for unusual circumstances without the ridiculous situation we had a month or so ago. We're not knowing whether we'd be able to meet or not meet and hold council meetings, which was totally ludicrous. The government dug the issue there, but we must get it right and not just go off on a, with respect to a slightly half-baked proposal, which doesn't actually reflect what we're thinking. I think we all know what we really want, and that's to have the flexibility, but with the checks and balances to ensure that democracy remains in place.
Okay, councillor Knight, I think what we're talking about now is writing in response, if they'll accept a late response on the grounds that primary legislation should allow flexibility for unusual circumstances. Is that okay? Right, so that's what we're voting on, primary legislation to allow flexibility for unusual circumstances. All those in favour, please show. That's eleven. Against? Two, thank you. Abstentions? Okay. Right, I'm moving on. Works to Trees, Homewoods, London Road. Any comments, please? Noted, yeah, no objection. Right. Item G is the request for funding for Bigglesway Community News. Comments, please, colleagues? Councillor Strong?
Also, the background, I know the background behind this, and I would just recommend that we do so. It's a good cause, it's very good at publicising what this town council does, they will plan other things. So I really think, I propose that we make this exception, that's really accepted.
accept it. Seconded.
Okay. What we are, quite what we are actually talking about, because the request is for funding over several years, and that's not what we normally do. So councillor Strong?
Yeah, I've had various discussions with Shirley Legg on some of these issues of the funding. I think it would be wrong to actually go on a implication that we're going to do it on a never-ending basis. I think there should be a specific one-off payment for the current financial year, and that if it wishes to continue on a future basis, that they be notified of the dates for submitting grant applications, so that we can consider each year, year on year. I think it's a very worthwhile thing that has occurred, it provides a lot of very useful information, but I don't think we want to tie, definitely, in fact, we shouldn't be trying to tie the hand to the council indefinitely. So provided it is for this current financial year only, I would support it, but no further than that. And then point out that we do have a timescale for grant applications, and if they wish to continue, then they can submit an application in the usual way, when the council will consider it, as with all other applications.
Would you accept that, councillor Albon?
It's actually a much better, more sensible proposal than mine made. Yes, I would happily accept it. And how do we, should we leave down to town card regarding the figures, or?
Well, the amount asked for is £2,000, so are we proposing £2,000? And have I got a proposal and a second?
£2,000, and I'll second it if.
Okay, £2,000, as requested here for one year. Okay. You wanted to come in, and then I'll go to.
Just briefly, that's all. I agree with what the comments that councillor Strong has been saying, and I know, and I recognise the fine work that Shirley and her colleagues do connected to this. I'm going to, I'm going to sound like a broken record player and just say what I normally say at this point in time. I'm very, very impressed with the hard work that they do. It isn't my intention, though, when this council is fully staffed, with the right people, with the right skill base, for the council to message its own messages through its own newsletter, and this would be complementary to that. So I'm just making the point that I would normally make, but I think in my own sense, I think a one-off, sorry, a single payment for now seems a sensible thing to do.
Okay, councillor Foster.
Just a clarification, we normally do our grants in January, so we're now in a new financial year, so this grant would be prior to the next phase of grants. Am I incorrect on that? If I'm incorrect, then please correct me, but I'm concerned that if it's in a different financial year, at what point does, if a grant came forward again, would they apply within the next phase, or is it in this, this financial year, year's grants? I'm just seeking to clarify that point, and I think the point around the, whether it's £2,000 at this point, at what point, if there's another grant application comes forward, would that be in the next financial year? And where do we clarify that, please?
The grants we awarded last, whenever it was, January, are for this financial year. So we award them from the 1st of April. So we know we've got some funding left that we didn't award then, so we can award this amount if the council wishes, from this year's grant allocation. That's right, isn't it? Councillor Pullinger.
You very much covered part of my comment, which was exactly that, that we make the decisions in the, in the, in the January for what we give at the very beginning of the next financial year. And we'll actually see in the payments listing this month that we've approved, that all of the grant payments are there, that we approve early in the year. We have already acknowledged through EDP that we need to do a review, and we are going to be doing a review of our grant policy. Ideas, I think, are welcome into how we might do that in a different way, whether we ought to consider potentially having two rounds of grant applications rather than one, so that they provide more opportunities for people in the future. As it comes to this particular request, I think we are where we are, where we haven't yet reviewed that policy. The policy does allow us to make exceptional grants out of that cycle, if we, if we as a council choose to do so. I just bear in mind that last month, we did say to some other people who applied for grants that to be applied at the right time later in the year. So we just need to bear in mind, I think, the effects where we are. I'm not making a comment on this particular application or such.
That instance is with different charities, and sometimes we don't award grants when they do apply for them. I'd just like to say that I had an email from Shirley, because I asked her one or two questions about this, and she's confirmed that they're setting themselves up as a foundation CIO, and they do have a bank account for Bigglesway Community Group, so they're now set up as a proper charity. And she also tells me that the trustees put in £1,000 a year towards this, which is one heck of a commitment for something like this. So the proposal is a one-off payment of £2,000 from this year's allocation of grant funding. All those in favour, please show. Okay, against? Thank you. Abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much. Now moving on to planning application. Noted. Okay, I'll move on then. Part 46, extension. Any comments? Councillor Strong?
Yeah, I've got a question. This temporary closure is requiring to safety issues due to train horns not being loud enough for crossing to be used safely. The closure is expected to continue from 23rd June 2021 up to 18 months. What is going to change with regard to the sound of horns in the 18-month period? Because this strikes me as a very peculiar wording or reason for doing so. So is it going to close the crossing, possibly closing permanently and creating alternative means of crossing the railway? But what's going to happen to train horns over the next 18 months that we don't know about?
Councillor Pullinger.
Thank you. I do recall, actually, councillor Strong, it was mentioned when this first came to us, that I believe they are looking to upgrade the horns on the new trains that were introduced with quieter ones. But I do think, effectively, we should note this in terms of what it is, but whether we ought to consider asking what the long-term plans are. They're putting temporary closure in, but do they actually have the long-term plans to do something to rectify it? Or are they perhaps doing an extended short temporary closure, so that they can turn around in 18 months' time and say, well, it's been closed for two years, and it's not been a problem, and everyone's been able to get around where they want to go, so there's no reason why we can't close it permanently? So I think we ought to represent the fact that ideally, we want to see a crossing remaining this location, so what are the unfindable outcomes?
Well, if I can help to answer that, at the examination in public, Central Beds committed to put the Bridle Bridge over that crossing as part of the Home Farm development. We wait to see whether it's in the actual local plan when it's finalised, but they talked about a Bridle Bridge over the A1 and a Bridle Bridge over that crossing to enable people to walk or cycle from Langford to Home Farm. So that, as far as I know, is the long-term plan, but I agree with the scepticism of colleagues about what might happen. Anyway, the proposal is to note it. Are we all happy noting it? Yeah? Okay. And then we've got the Police and Crime Commissioner's newsletter. Any questions, comments on that? No, not it. Not it. Okay, thank you. Do we have any members of the public? I don't think we do, do we? So no public open session? Though we have to move the resolution that it's advisable in the interest that the public impresser excluded, where we discuss the exempt item about public realm. We could now cease the recording.